Thank you for coming to the Journal of Econometrics session. This is called What's a Standard Error? Let me just give you a little bit background. So this is the journal's 50th birthday. And we have planned something at this this year's ASSA meeting for for three years. A variety of things, including a session. So a year ago, we sent an email to the five speakers today. And this this was exactly our email. So to give you some background, applied work in econometrics and social sciences confronted with new sources of data, such as network data, experimental data, text and graphical data, and other unusual designs. Some researchers feel the need to forego standard errors because of large sample sizes. And furthermore, administrative data that may contain a whole population of interest. So do we really need standard errors? So the overarching question that we're interested in is how should we think about summarizing uncertainty? So this motivates the session, which is what is a standard error? So we hope to learn something about this from from this session. So we are very fortunate and grateful to the five speakers to get a broad perspective of how we think about the the problem with invited statisticians. We have econometricians, we have theorists, we have applied econometricians. So the format is each speaker is going to speak 20 and no more than 25 minutes. And all questions will be held off until the end. And because three speakers will be on Zoom, I may have to relate the questions to the speakers. So for further ado, I'm going to start with Andrew Gellman, who is going to be on Zoom. So I will actually stop sharing at this point. Andrew, it's all yours.
Oh, hi. Well, a pleasure to to reach this different audience. I'm giving my perspective partly as a statistician and partly as a political scientist. But first, let me tell you a story. Just it actually just happened a couple of days ago that I got a new, we're traveling, we're in sabbatical, and we don't have a scale, and we're eating all this delicious food here. So we wanted to know how much we weighed. So I went went to the store to buy a scale. And I didn't want to be wasteful and get one of those battery operated scales. So I went to the store and I said, Do you have a scale without a battery? And they had this little one crappy thing for nine euros. Just a really terrible scale. You could just tell by looking at it that it was going to be no good. And I took the scale home and I weighed myself. It was, I thought first I would zero the scale and it has a little knob so you can zero it. And every time I stepped on it and got off, it was at a different place. So to start with, I couldn't zero it. But I thought, This is fine. Like, I'm a statistician. This is a measurement problem. And we tell people if the measurement is noisy, take multiple measurements. So I got on the scale and it said I weighed 66 kilograms. And then I got off and then I got on and it said 65.5 kilograms, which didn't sound so bad. And then I got off and then it said 67 kilograms. It was jumping around. I was getting measurements below 66 and above 68. So I took I took 10 measurements and I got an estimate and the standard deviation. And I divide the standard deviation by square root of 10 to get a standard error. And my estimated weight was 67.4 kilograms with a standard error of 0.3. And I just thought, 0.3 is a pretty big standard error. I want it to be smaller. So I'm going to take a bunch more measurements. So I took about 40 more measurements. And after that, I had an estimate of 67.1 and the standard error of 0.1. And then I realized that maybe I don't believe that standard error because the scale could be biased. And it was kind of funny. I was thinking about this because when we teach this, we never talk about it. Like, sure, in econ, you talk about, but in statistics, we always use this example of weighing yourself on the on the scale and weighing yourself 10 times and then saying, Well, of course, we're assuming it's an unbiased scale. But how would you know the scale is unbiased without knowing, without measuring like an object of known weight, which I didn't do? I guess I could have like got 67 liters of water and seen what it weighed on the scale. But like, without putting in that effort, how could I possibly do it? But there was something interesting about this example beyond the just the simple fact that we don't teach it, that we don't teach this, is that the fact that the measurements were so variable gives me a kind of clue about the bias. That is, there's no way you could have a scale with a bias of, let's say, less than 0.1, a known bias of less than 0.1 kilograms if the measurements are varying by as much as two kilograms. They're one plus plus one or minus one kilogram in either direction. So there is some way in which, like, our usual way of thinking about it is, well, either I assume it's unbiased or I say the bias could be anything, or I say I have a prior on the bias. But it's all kind of wrong. Or from a Bayesian point of view, if you have a prior on the bias, your prior is somehow correlated or dependent with the variation of the measurements themselves. And so that was just kind of like something I hadn't thought about that much. I'm going to get back to that point. But first, I want to answer a question which comes up a lot. People email me with this question a lot. And it's one of my favorite questions because I have an answer for it and it's non-obvious. So the question is, How do you interpret standard errors for a regression that's been fit to the entire population? And this, it's a kind of, okay, it happens a lot. Like, people, you imagine you fit a regression to 50 states or 435 congressional districts. The 50 states are not a sample from some larger population of infinite states or even 200 states. There's, there's only 50 states. That's, that's all there are. And so I will sometimes hear people tell me that they think that the standard error should be zero or that the standard error doesn't even mean anything because there's no sampling. And it kind of depends what question you're asking. But usually, I think the standard error is meaningful. So if you fit a regression to the 50 states and your goal is to estimate the regression slope fit to those 50 data points, then indeed, there's no standard error because you know it exactly. But I would argue that in every example that I've ever seen, the goal is to learn about other things, other outside of your data. So you're not going to be interested in 50 new states, but you might be interested in these 50 states in future years, for example. And from a fundamental point of view, I think that the problem people have, like, I think probability is really great. And there's more than one mathematical model for probability. One model is the sampling model that you're drawing balls from an urn or that you're drawing 50 states from a large population of states. But there is another another model for probability, which is the measurement error model. So if you have a model that says in each state, something is happening, but it could have happened differently, right? So you you observe X beta, X times beta plus epsilon, and epsilon is a random variable. Then, yeah, you can assume that the epsilons were drawn from a superpopulation, even if there are only 50 states. There's nothing wrong with that model. And often, it makes more sense than the sampling model. So sampling is great. Like, I do a lot of sampling statistics for a living, but it's not the master model. There's no reason why one should think that having the entire population means that you you know everything. I'll tell you a story about this. So this was from my own research many years ago. We were trying to estimate what's called the seats votes curve, which would be, let's say, in the US Congress, we might try to estimate what percentage of the seats that the Republicans would have received in the House of Representatives had they received 50% of the vote, for example. Now, they didn't receive exactly 50% of the vote. They received a little bit more. And so if they, how can you make an inference about what would have happened had they received 50%? Well, it's simplest thing is to say, Suppose they receive 51% of the vote. Then what we can do is subtract 1% of the vote in each of the 435 districts. And that's a counterfactual. It's kind of a simple counterfactual, but it's logical. In real life, you'd have to have, it's not completely right because there are uncontested elections and some other things. But forgetting that, that's a fairly straightforward counterfactual. And then I can say, Had the Republicans received 50% of the vote, this is what percent of the seats they would have received. Now, I want a standard error for this. And this is for real. We did this like 30 years ago, 35 years ago. And we wanted a standard error for 30 years ago, too. We wanted to, we wanted to know our uncertainty, partly because we're comparing things that were varying over time. And so we wanted to get a sense of that. So how do you get uncertainty when you have all 435 congressional districts? Well, they are not a sample from a superpopulation. So you would not want to just fit the regression and take the standard error, nor would you want to do a parametric bootstrap of the 435 elections? Because doing a parametric bootstrap is like, not sorry, non-parametric. Doing a non-parametric bootstrap is like re-sampling the 435 districts. But really, we know that these 435 districts like exist already. Like, just for example, to simplify, imagine that there were 200 that were strongly Democratic favoring, 200 that were Republican favoring, and 35 in the middle. You wouldn't want to resample because then if you resample, you might have like 190 in one group and 210 in the other. And that doesn't make sense. So in order to get a standard error, we had to kind of manufacture it, but but in a good way. That that sounds bad, but but it good in the sense that we needed to define a reference set, a sampling distribution, a probability distribution. And it was not going to be based on sampling. So we wanted a kind of measurement error model, but it's not not measurement error exactly because the votes were known. I mean, the accuracy, the inaccuracy in the vote count is is very minor. That's not what's going on. So we framed it as a forecasting problem. So if the election were happening in the future, what might happen? And you can see that if you look at the election, if you try to forecast the election from two, the current election from what happened two years ago, you you get a pretty good, a pretty good estimate. But you have a standard, you have a standard deviation, a standard deviation of of the forecast of about plus or minus 8%, I think, per in each district. You can, you can get, you can get the individual district wrong by, I might be getting the number wrong. But I think it was something like eight percentage points. If you try to predict two elections at a time, it's like off typically, the standard deviation of the errors is about 10 percentage points. If you do four elections, three elections at a time, it's about 12. So we extrapolate back down to zero and said, There's a kind of nugget, which is six percentage points. So our model was that there is a kind of a variation, not measuring error, but a variation unexplained by our our model of six percentage points at the district level. And we took it from there. We we use that uncertainty as a way of driving the uncertainty in our probability model, which gave us standard errors. Now, the, I guess, the point of this story in some senses, while getting a standard error is really hard, maybe we're just used to these very simple problems where you have random sampling and in which case you, that that gives you a very natural model. But in general, if we just think of life, like observational data, the sort that we deal with in economics and political science all the time, observational data is is not a sample. And that's not the appropriate model, which means getting a standard error kind of takes some modeling effort. But that's fair enough, right? Like, getting a maximum likelihood estimate takes modeling effort, right? Getting a Bayesian estimate takes modeling effort. Getting statistical estimates takes effort. It's it's only fair that getting the standard error might take a little bit more effort. And I think that we just have to accept that. Now, another to, I just, this really just a series of examples is this talk because I feel like, I feel like the best way I can contribute to this discussion is by sharing things that have happened to me. And you can try to see how you can fit these into your theories. So another example is time series of polls. So there are a lot of issues, like recently abortion rights, where we polls are taken frequently. You might have a series like the Gallup poll or the General Social Survey or National Election Study, some survey that's done regularly, and you can look at how the estimates vary over time. Each estimate has a standard error. The standard error is kind of irrelevant because once you have a time series, the standard error doesn't matter anymore. Like, the internal standard error is is kind of irrelevant. If you only have two polls, it's really useful to have the standard error because that can give a sense of whether you can explain the difference by noise alone. But if I have a series of polls years after year and they move around like this, who cares what the standard error is? Because between state, between the between year variation is is the more important anyway. Another way of saying it is, What if you had N equals a million in each poll? Then you'd have a very tiny standard error, but who cares, right? Because you have variation from from year to year. And so another way of looking at this is to say that the standard error that pops out of our computer program is a kind of minimal level of uncertainty. So if you go back, apply this principle, the very first, so the bathroom scale example that I gave you. Well, there, there was a standard error of 0.1, which I don't believe. But I do believe that there's no way the uncertainty is less than 0.1 kilograms, right? It's a minimum lower bound. If I do a, if I do a regression on 50 states and my standard error is zero because I'm doing finite population inference, well, I think that's wrong. That's certainly a minimum. It's, it's not going to be below zero. And so there are settings when we only have one poll and we don't have the time series and we don't have the time series, then we can use the standard error. But let's not kid ourselves. Let's not take it too seriously. And you can think of all those published results that you've heard of that didn't replicate, all those things that were statistically significant, and just fill in the blanks of your favorite ridiculous results that were statistically significant, but either didn't replicate or were never going to replicate. They had those little standard errors. But again, that's a kind of minimal standard error because it minimal uncertainty because it doesn't account for for bias. People sometimes think that if you have a randomized experiment or an identification strategy such as regression discontinuity or difference in difference or whatever, people sometimes think that if you have that, you don't have to worry about bias. Because the idea is if you have a bias in the treatment group and a bias in the control group, they'll cancel out. It's, it's a, it's very seductive reasoning because it seems it doesn't matter what the bias could be as long as, as long as it's in both. But actually, no, because the bias can be interacting with the treatment. So the bias actually can be different in the treatment and control group because the treat, being treated could actually affect the bias you have. You really have to have some model for the bias. It's, it's not enough to assume it's, it's going to cancel out. And again, you don't have to have a model. You can assume it's zero and that will give you this minimum level. So one or two more stories, maybe one story, and I'll end a little early, which gives more time for everybody else. So I did a, some colleagues and I did a study a few years ago where we looked at public opinion polls, state level pre-election polls. And we looked at how how far off they were. So the best thing about looking at election polls is then the election happens and you can see how far off the poll was. And again, even when elections are disputed, they're disputed by fractions of a percentage point. And so in terms of polling error, you can still get inaccurate. I mean, whether or not Gore actually won Florida by 30,000 votes in 2000, it was still very close. And so you can look, you can look, compare the standard error to the actual error. And you see the actual error is about twice as big as the standard error. And we figured it out, like, we worked it out. We only use polls taken in the two weeks before each election. So we were not super concerned about last minute opinion changes. So it's kind of funny, though, is that we gave this rule of thumb, like, take the standard error from the poll and double it. And that's what you should be using. And but like, double, it's like, if you know a little math, it sounds weird. Like, shouldn't it be like the square root of S squared, one plus S squared, two? That is, like, if you're adding an unknown bias, that should add something to the variance. And then you take square, it shouldn't double it. Like, of course, that's like, if I have a poll with a billion, with a million people in it and the standard error is very, very tiny, then doubling it won't work. But there's a kind of logic, a kind of anthropic principle to the doubling of the standard error. And the anthropic principle here is that we don't have polls with 100,000 people to ask a simple yes or no opinion question because people know that that's not really appropriate. And they don't usually release polls with 40 respondents either because that's too noisy. So the anthropic principle is that polls typically tend to be about the size that you'd want them to be to get roughly the uncertainty you want, which is comparable to the bias. Because we know from simple principles that if this, if the bias is bigger than the, if you look at the bias or the squared bias or the variance, whichever is smaller, whichever is bigger is the one to reduce. So anthropically, it makes sense that our biases are on the same scale as our standard errors, which, well, of course, that would actually tell you maybe to multiply the standard error by square root of two rather than two. But like, I don't have the precision here. So, okay, lots of applications. I've seen this be an issue. Maybe it's happening all over the place. Maybe we should always be doing this. Maybe we should think that our studies have just the standard error that we want and there's about that much bias there. I think that might be a good starting point for us. Obviously, needs to be modified in the context of particular examples. And I'm sure the other speakers will have many other perspectives on this. So I hope you can weigh my examples, keep these examples in mind when you hear the other talks and think about how the, those, their methods would apply to these examples.
Thank you, Andrew. The next speaker is Pat Klein, I guess. Patrick, yep.
Hi, okay, let me try to share my slides. All right. Can people see the slides advancing here? Or am I stuck on the title slide?
I don't see.
Okay, let me try something. Apologies for that. So I wasn't quite sure what this session was going to be all about, but I was very heartened to hear Andrew's comments. I think I'm going to build on a lot of the insights that he had. In particular, the scale examples, very relevant to what I'm about to present. So this is a joint work with Tim Armstrong and Sophie Sun. And we're going to be talking about what we think ties into the broad theme of this session about how to account for uncertainty in statistical analysis. So in economics and throughout the social sciences, I would say that the researchers have twin goals. They'd like to have precise estimates, but they'd also like those estimates to be credible in the sense of exhibiting low bias. Now, to assess precision, it's widely understood that you ought to report some sort of standard error that accounts for the variability, whether that variability is sampling variability or variability that could be arising due to measurement errors or forecast uncertainty. We usually devise one argument or another to guarantee that it's going to be asymptotically normal. And so we find standard errors informative. But when it comes to credibility, there's much less consensus about how to quantify the potential for bias. What's quite popular now in economics journals, and I see it in other disciplines as well, is to have these robustness checks reported, where we experiment with different specifications, either adding and subtracting regressors or changing the sample slightly. Almost always, these are settings where we're entertaining nested models. But one can come away from reading one of these papers that's flooded with robustness checks. In many cases, there's more robust, robustness estimates reported than primary estimates. One can come away befuddled and overwhelmed by all of these point estimates as standard errors. What should I, if I really care about the parameter, what should I come away thinking is the right answer? How can I aggregate this information today together? So today, I'm going to work out a simple example that's a stylized depiction of what's going on in robustness exercises like this. This is an excerpt from an AR paper I'm going to come back to. But I could have just used Andrew's scale example where we're not sure what the bias is of the scale, where we've got some parameter of interest, theta, and we have two estimates of it. One is a robust estimate, if you will, in that it's asymptotically unbiased. And the other one's a restricted estimate that's more precise but has some unknown asymptotic bias B. So an example could be Andrew's scale, but we could also think about long and short regression. If I add more covariates that are good controls, maybe my design becomes more credible. I'm less susceptible to bias, but I'm also more variable if those controls are correlated with my regressor of interest. We're going to define YO as the difference between the restricted and unrestricted estimator and work with the standard asymptotic approximation that YU and YO are bivariate, normally distributed. YU is centered in the right place. It's centered around theta. YO is centered around B, our bias level. And we're going to assume we have a known variance covariance matrix. It's common to report a studentized version of YO, which economists would call an over-identification test statistic. So O stands for over-identification here. So YO is a measure of the bias. The studentized version could be used as a test statistic to do the sort of specification test that we teach grad students in their first year of their PhD in economics. What I want to argue today is that maybe we shouldn't teach them to use TO to test. Rather than test for misspecification, perhaps we should adapt to misspecification. What do I mean by that? Well, what we want to do is combine YU and YR into a type of optimal estimate. And here's our logic. So if the bias were known, I think most would agree that what we ought to do is subtract the bias off the restricted estimate. And then we have two estimates of the same thing, right? We have YR minus B and YU. And we can get a minimum variance estimate by combining them together by GMM. The problem is, we don't know the bias, right? Maybe it sounded like Andrew knows the maximal bias on his scale, cap B. And if that's the situation you're in, it would be reasonable to conduct minimax estimation. And you can actually show that in the situation, minimax estimation amounts to an adjustment of GMM where you're using the least favorable estimate of B. In many cases, though, we often don't even know this upper bound B. That would be, My scale is biased, but I don't know by how much. And what we're going to do is treat the how much as a tuning parameter and then borrow a page from a long literature in statistics where they propose adaptive estimators. What we mean by adaptive is that we'll achieve maximal risk that's near minimax uniformly in whatever that level of bias B is, or sorry, whatever that upper bound of level bias is. And I'll be more formal about that in a few slides. One way to think about what this is doing is it's shrinking the observed noisy estimate of the bias towards zero and then adjusting GMM accordingly. All right, I mentioned that this is related to a large stats literature. I don't have time to cover all this stuff. But relative to some of the things you might be thinking we're proposing in the model averaging literature, we're not proposing that. So this, most of this literature is either about being formally based, where you have a subjective prior, or dealing with multi-parameter problems where you can invoke James Stein-type arguments. We're not going to be following you those paths. We're interested in a scaler estimate. What we're really building on is this literature on robustness efficiency trade-offs. In particular, this 1984 paper by Peter Pickle has the very, I think, underappreciated intuition that small biases can be worthwhile, as he puts it. In other words, we like to work with nominal models that aren't quite right, but they're probably not terrible. And so maybe what we should do is, you know, hope that the model that we that we think is approximately right is not too badly misspecified, but also add some safeguards to control the maximal risk if it's totally misspecified. That's kind of the approach that we're going to take today, except we're going to do it within this adaptive estimation framework. And we're going to use some computational tricks to computer estimate that I'll talk about in a minute. So to fix ideas, because I didn't know the scale thing was going to happen today, I'm going to have you focus on this example, which is, I think, a prototypical example. This is, this is from the American Economic Review in 2018. The authors, very distinguished authors, are interested in the effect of unexpected hospitalization on medical spending. They compute the so-called event study estimates and they kind of eyeball what's going on here. So this is the, what you might call a pre-trend, okay? So the prior to the hospitalization, they they eyeball this and say, Oh, it looks like there's a trend here. We're worried about bias from a neglected trend. Let's detrend everything. So we'll take YU as the, as the model that allows the linear pre-trend. But you could have also omitted that pre-trend. And it turns out, you would have gotten much smaller standard errors, but you'd be exposing yourself potentially to a lot of bias. So we'll call YR the model that omits the pre-trend. All right, so first pass approach. If we knew that the bias that we're exposing ourselves to from omitting the pre-trend is bounded by cap B, then it would be reasonable to compute B minimax estimators. What's a B minimax estimator? Okay, well, Okay, well, let's take R. R is our risk function. It takes, is inputs the parameter of interest theta, the amount of bias, and our estimator. We're going to be working with squared loss, so R is really our mean squared error. The max risk soups over the parameter space, so theta can be anything, but the magnitude of bias is bounded by cap B. Okay, and so R max is our max risk, given this nominal bound on the magnitude of the bias and given our estimator. All right, and so you can think of a B, as I said, as kind of tuning parameter. Okay, so if you said B to zero, then you're going to get back GMM. Okay, because if I know a priori that I have no bias, I ought to get the minimum variance combination. This is not very robust. It does have a very elegant analytic representation, it turns out. If I set B equal to infinity, I'll take the opposite approach. I'll put all the weight on YU, the detrended model, and I'll be the most robust, but I'll have higher variance. And I can choose intermediate values of B, the trade-off robust worst-case risk, which I'm calling robustness against efficiency, which is meant to, I really should say, precision. Okay, so how would you compute this? I don't have time to go into details, but basically we have a min-max problem, but if we're careful, we can interchange the order of the max and the min. The inner min is a base rule. Given that we're working with squared loss, the solution to this base rule is just going to be the posterior mean. The outer max is solved by discretizing the prior and just invoking a convex optimization routine. So it's pretty straightforward. Here's what we get when we do that. So let's look here at the Y-axis. So this is our same Dobkin and all example. If they omit the pre-trend, they get this point estimate. If they include the pre-trend, they get this estimate down here that's off by about $200. If we knew that there was no bias, we would do GMM. GMM is here. Most of the weight is on the restricted estimator. If we allow more and more bias, right, so if we compute the, these are the beta minimax or B minimax estimates, we're starting to move towards the unrestricted estimate, and then eventually we assign to to the unrestricted estimator that has the pre-trend in there. What risk does this achieve? Well, on the second Y-axis, we've got your mean squared error, which we've normalized the mean squared error of the detrended estimate to one. If you impose and are correct that there's no bias, then you can get a substantial risk reduction by using GMM. If you allow some bias, you say, you know what, my, there might be a neglected trend, but it's not that big. You can still gain substantially. So around here, we're getting a 10% risk reduction relative to the detrended model. We've combined the detrended and no-trend model together optimally, subject to our bound of the bias. The problem is, which bound of the bias should we choose? So to answer this question, I want to start by thinking about an oracle that knows the true least upper bound B on the bias. Well, they would face this oracle risk, R star B, which is the minimax risk or the B minimax risk. Okay, so they're using the B minimax estimator and the true, and they're bound that they've posited is in fact correct. It does hold. Let's define this concept of the adaptation regret of an estimator as the proportional increase in worst-case risk over the oracle. Okay, so we've got our oracle max risk and our own max risk scaled by the oracle's max risk. Our idea is, let's try to mimic the oracle by minimizing the worst-case adaptation regret. Okay, so we've stuck another soup in here. We've souped over all possible true least upper bounds. Okay? And if we then choose an estimator that minimizes this worst-case adaptation regret, we're going to be uniformly near minimax, meaning our max risk will be close to or as close as possible to the oracle's max risk, even though we haven't restricted, we haven't put a cap on the maximal level of bias. Another way to think about this is that all we've done is rewrite this as another sort of minimax problem where risk, it now takes this ratio form, and we're souping over the actual level of bias instead of the bound of the bias. All right, so we've reduced this to minimax on a new objective that has a ratio form. We can discretize, invoke the same arguments, interchange the min and the max. Our solution is going to exhibit constant adaptation regret at all points of support of the implicit least favorable prior that we're solving for. Here, that was a mouthful. So here's what it actually looks like. All right, so the adaptive estimator is, is right here. It's about halfway between GMM and the unrestricted estimator. And you can see the adaptive risk, sorry, the risk of the adaptive estimator, it's hovering, it's shadowing the oracles, right? So when the oracle does really well, we do really well as well. Whereas when the bias grows large and the oracle doesn't do that great, but of course, nobody can beat the oracle. There's nothing you can do about that. We do less well. However, our max risk remains bounded. What does that mean? That means if, when we look at that over-identification test statistic TO, if it's really big, we take note of that in a principled way, and we say, oh, you're probably misspecified. Let's put the trend in. Okay, so the algorithm is doing kind of what the authors, Dobkin and all, were doing when they eyeballed that there's probably a pre-trend in there, except it's doing it in a way that's not cheating and that has provable properties about the risk that the researcher is exposed to. We can, of course, think about this as a Bayesian approach with, with a set of least favorable priors. Here, we're plotting each one of these procedures, whether it's B minimax or adaptive, has some least favorable prior. You can see the adaptive prior is somewhere in between the B equals one, meaning the model's almost right, and the B equals five, meaning the model could be totally screwed up. Priors, all those priors have to be discreet. You can see that for any of these priors, that your estimation procedure's actual risk properties are going to be very nice if there turns out to be not really very much bias. However, the adaptive prior is a special prior, right? It didn't require any user input. I didn't have to state my beliefs over the worst possible value that the bias can take. It also has certain invariance properties and so on and so forth, and it's robust in the sense that our worst-case risk is bounded. Now, you can show that the adaptive estimator takes a simple analytic form via invariance argument. So it turns out to be the sum of the GMM estimator, which is not very robust, but then a sort of adjustment for the amount of bias that we think is present. Okay, so this delta here is taking as input what you would normally use as your specification test statistic TO. And it's shrinking it to get an estimate of the scale bias. And you can show that its shape depends only on the correlation coefficient between YO, sorry, between YU and YO. Okay, this is kind of cool because we're doing tuning-free shrinkage with less than three things, right? So this is not a James Stein type argument. We've actually computed this thing for all possible values of rho, interpolated, build a lookup table. So the only thing that you actually need relative to the sorts of things that you already see all the time in the QJ and the ER is to actually report this correlation coefficient along with your point estimate and standard error of your robustness check. Two extensions, one is that we show that the adaptive estimator, so this estimate of the bias, is very well approximated by, and actually by some respects, improved upon by a simpler soft thresholding estimator, where you've chosen the threshold to minimize worst case, worst-case adaptation regret. There is one problem that you are potentially exposed to with this proportional form of regret, which is that when the restricted estimator is orders of magnitude more precise than the unrestricted estimator, then you're very tempted to put a lot of weight on the restricted estimator, because if your model's almost right, you'd feel a huge level of regret of having missed out on all of those precision gains. And that can expose you to a lot of max risk if the model's very wrong. So it may be useful to prespecify a cap on how much risk you're willing to entertain before using something like this. And I'll show you now in some examples how that could potentially become a concern. So, all right, this Dobkin event study example, here's their original estimates. This is with trend. This is without the trend. You can see omitting the pre-trend lowers the standard errors by about 14 to 30%. In each year, in event time, they get a T stat on the difference. They didn't actually do this, but we, we went back to the data and looked at it. The T stat would have been 1.2. So you wouldn't have rejected. They erred on the cautious side of, of detrending everything. If you adapt, what you get is quite different from a pre-test. So here we've got the detrended estimate in blue. We've got the no detrending up at the top. GMM is very close to that. It puts a lot of the weight on the restricted estimate. Adaptive is somewhere in the middle. Pre-testing would have put all the weight on the restricted estimate. Okay, here's the risk profiles that come out of that. So of course, if the bias is small, all the estimators do pretty well. The unrestricted estimate has flat risk, right? Because bias doesn't enter the distribution of the unrestricted estimate. If you use the restricted estimate, you expose yourself to potentially unbounded risk, because the bias can be unbounded. The the risk is increasing in the square of the bias. If you use a pre-test estimator to do really well, if you, if your model's exactly right, or if it's really wrong, right? Because if it's really wrong, you put all the weight on the unrestricted estimator. Adaptive smooths that out, right? And so adaptive is going to expose you to lower maximal risk than you get with pre-test, which could be pretty bad if you're in the kind of what Andrew was calling the anthropomorphic range of the, of the parameter space. The oracle, of course, dominates everyone, but we can't actually achieve the oracle level of performance. The adaptive level is our attempt to emulate the oracle, and it seems to us to be a sensible approach. Now, let me fast forward to a very different literature that's prototypical of empirical IO. So Barry Levinson-Pecos or our best attempt to replicate Barry Levinson-Pecos, the parameter of interest theta is an average price markup. YR is GMM using supply and demand side instruments. YU is GMM only using the demand side instruments. If the demand side instruments are valid, then, I should say, if the demand and supply inside instruments are valid, then the bias B is zero. In this case, you see, you get much smaller standard errors if you use that extra set of instruments in GMM. However, you have a very big difference between the restricted and unrestricted estimates, right? Your T stat on your over identification test is six. Now, you know, in IO, you just keep going, even if that's the case. But if you were to be adaptive about it and let it choose how much weight to put on each one, the adaptive estimator, along with its soft thresholding approximation, would put almost all the weight on YU, which is just using one set of instruments. Pre-test would also, but pre-test puts, exposes itself to a huge amount of regret for the same reasons as in the earlier risk plot. And putting all, never even entertaining the other set of instruments also exposes you to a huge potential amount of regret, because you might miss out on a huge amount of precision gain. Okay, I see that I'm basically out of time. So let me just show you one last example, famous Angerston-Kruger comparing OLS to IV returns to schooling. If you had a constant coefficient, if you have exogenated, then the bias is zero. Well, in this case, because OLS is two orders of magnitude more precise than IV, you are tempted to put all of the weight on OLS. That exposes you to potentially huge increases in max risk. That seems unreasonable. Maybe you should clamp down and not fully adapt. And here we're showing how the risk function, your max risk that you're exposed to can be brought down with a simple adjustment. Of course, you don't gain as much when the model's exactly right, but I think most people will be willing to trade that off. So in conclusion, as any statistician will know from talking to an economist, for two seconds, economists love their models. Unfortunately, our models are never quite right. And the way that the publication process works, we're asked as a result to demonstrate the credibility of what we're doing by messing around with some specification tests. We've developed what we think is a principled way that's easy to use to figure out what's actually been learned from the specification tests and refine our initial estimate of a parameter. Thank you.
So we're going to move to in-person.
Yeah, so our next speaker is Jim Powell. He's, he's kind of, you can take an extra few minutes also. So your slides are here?
Thank you. I'm gonna do this. Yeah, I gotta put the timer. It's an honor to be here. I was pleased when I was invited to give this discussion a few months ago. I became less pleased over time as I talked to colleagues and various people about the questions that were posed. Let me see, where's the page temp? Nope. Which button do I push? Scroll up. Yeah. Arrow. Now, there we go, scroll down. This was the background that Serena gave us. I thought about it for a while and talked about it, and as I told my drinking buddies last night, I, I got nothing. There's really not much to say. I, I could work with the first question about different data sources like network data and experimental data. You give me a model and I could try to figure out standard errors. And I am uncomfortable with you know, standard errors being zero or close to zero or being ignored. We spent a lot of time teaching students that X bar is not equal to mu, and it takes a long time for some students to get it. And then you, you go back and sometimes X bar is mu and that's so I'm, I'm uncomfortable with this and, you know, I I've learned a bit from the first two discussions, and I'm hoping to learn some more, but I really don't. Any fix I had for how to make X bar different than mu when the sample size is large is also a problem when the sample size is small. So I will not answer this question, and I'll, instead I'll do what I usually do when I have a question like this, I Googled it. Show you some definitions from the World Wide Web, as we used to call it. And then I give you a bunch of formulas for what, for standard errors for Y bar, standard in quotes, and then talk briefly about the sample size. So the first thing that came up was Wikipedia, and that was pretty good. I, you know, if this were an exam question, a short answer question on one of my exams, this might be five out of five points. I'm an easy grader. There's one, standard error is standard, standard deviation of its sampling distribution. I don't like that so much, or an estimate of that standard deviation. That's, that's, that's better. The truth is a very good estimate, but this is basically standard error is estimated standard deviation of a statistic. The, usually an estimate of the parameter. I don't like that so much. I'd rather have it be estimator of a parameter, because standard error of an estimate is zero. Estimate is, is what it is. Skribo, which is a plagiarism and editing website, says the standard error for the mean is, indicates how likely, how different the population mean is likely to be from the sample mean. Tells you how much sample mean would vary if you were to repeat the study using new samples from within a single population. That's okay. That's probably a three out of five, because it didn't really answer the question, what is the standard error? It sort of said what the standard error, some of the properties, but Merriam-Webster the standard deviation of a statistic, which I don't like. That's probably a three out of five. It's estimated standard deviation. It's, we want the standard errors. We want to think about them as random variables, I think. And then Statistics How-To, which advertises itself as Statistics for the Rest of Us. And I don't think us includes us. It's for the other us. There, the standard error is very similar to the standard deviation. Both the measures of spread. Yeah, I, I'm generous. I would give this two points. The more spread out your data, that's, that's good. It's good. They got the sign right on that. Investopedia. The standard error is the approximate standard deviation, approximate standard deviation. It's kind of estimate, I guess. And then it kind of falls apart in bullet point two, describes the variation between the calculated mean of the population and one which is considered known or accepted as accurate. What does that mean? I don't know. The more data points in the calculation, the smaller the The more data points in the calculation, the smaller the standard errors tend to be. Which is true, I guess. And then I didn't actually Google this. I binged it first and then I Googled it. So the Bing dictionary search engine gave basically a description of it it it's a three point because it doesn't have an estimate. It's the standard deviation of the theoretical distribution of the large population suggestions. So I had a problem with that. But then talking to some colleagues, they advised me to do the the new artificial intelligence definition, the chat G P T A I. And that is starts out. Okay, standard area is a measure of variability. It is calculated as the standard deviation of a sampling distribution divided by the square root of the sample size. And I oh, too many square roots there. Maybe it thinks the sampling distribution is the sample, the empirical distribution of the sample. And but the rest of it is right. Standard areas used to determine precision of the statistic. So I asked it what a sampling distribution was. And unfortunately, they got it right. Sampling distribution is a distribution of the statistic, not the sample. So the previous definition would probably be two points out of five because the formula is wrong. Okay, let's look at some textbooks. And I'm pleased to say that they're right, you know. Just picked out a couple of examples that I thought were good. These are from the glossary, so they're a little short. I would like my students to have a little longer. You know, half a blue book page at least, not just one sentence. But standard error is generally an estimate of the standard deviation of an estimator. I might have gone for estimator instead of estimate, but they're both right. We don't usually distinguish between the number standard error and the random variable to rule standard error. And there is a nice asymptotic standard error. I like to think of standard errors as the estimated standard deviation of an approximate distribution. Where, you know, the distribution of the estimator may not be normal, but it might be approximately normal. And we want the standard error of that normal approximation. So that asymptotic standard error valid in large samples. And then Stock and Watson. You know, it has my preferred estimator of the standard deviation of an estimator, but it seems kind of like in shampoo bottles, they used to say lather, rinse, repeat, you know. It's an estimate of the standard deviation of an estimator of the standard deviation. So most of these definitions in the internet don't distinguish between the true and the estimated standard deviation about I made that point. I already made the point. I like the distinction between I like standard errors to include approximate distributions. And I note that they're most useful when the approximate distribution is normal. Because then your estimate, then your plus or minus two standard errors works. And it's a nuisance parameter. So one thing I have been guilty of in the past is worrying too much about how to estimate standard errors precisely. And it's not the precision. We don't really care whether a standard error is estimated precisely. We care about whether the T statistic is behaves like we think it does. So you know, to take the square root of the unbiased estimator of the variance, and that's an estimator of the standard deviation, that's biased downward because it Jensen's inequality. But who cares? You know, if the T statistic has a known distribution, even if you put a biased downward biased estimator of the variance in the denominator, then that's fine. We don't. What we care about is how well the T statistic or the confidence intervals are associated with are approximated by a standard normal distribution. And the word standard, you know, is in quotes because there's no standard standard errors. There's billions of standard errors. Not maybe not billions, but many, many multitude. So let's go through the list. Let's do standard errors for the sample mean. I think we can agree that if why is I D and at moments exist, the standard deviation of Y bar is sigma over Rudin. And we have lots of ways of estimating that standard deviation. We can use the maximum likelihood, the biased estimator with the variance bias downward and take a square root, which is biased downward even more. Or we could do the standard standard error, which is using the unbiased estimated the variance and taking its square root. Or we can if the data is really normal, we could figure out what the right constant is to multiply or divide by the sum of squared errors. That involves ratio, square root of two over pi and some ratio of gamma functions, but to a close approximation that you divide by N minus one and a half. And that's only true if the data is exactly normal. If it's not normal, you got to add some terms having to do with the kurtosis and the skewness and so on, but they're all of order one over N or one over N squared. And then the robust one, when I was in graduate school, the this kind of robustness was considered cool that you take the interquartile range and you divide by the interquartile range of of a standard normal, and that gives you a scale estimator, but it's not an estimator of the standard deviation unless the data is exactly normal. But not generally not the right, so it's robust, but it's robust in quotes because it's inconsistent for most distributions. And then we got, we could go the other direction from test inversion, go to confidence interval inversion, if we could get a bootstrapped capital signal and we take its length and divide by four. That's you know, that's two standard deviations on both sides. So we could get an estimated that way. And there are better ways to do that than, you know, more symmetric ways to do that. There's the bootstrap, the theoretical bootstrap where we take, we treat the empirical distribution function is the distribution of the data and calculate the sampling distribution from that. And that turns out to be the same as maximum likelihood estimator, I think. You can correct me if I'm wrong on any of these. This was done quickly. Jackknife was estimator of the variant variance was defined to be the same as the unbiased estimator. There's a bunch of heteroschasticity consistent standard errors that are all either maximum likelihood or unbiased, except for H C three, which I like it. It basically multiplies the variance estimate, the maximum likelihood variance estimate by N over N minus one squared. Square is the penalty, which is about basically dividing by N minus two. So it's a little bit more bumps it up a little bit more than you would if you had normal data and wanted an unbiased estimate. And then here's the what part of the charge to the panel was talking about the finite population correction. If the popular population is finite, size M, and we sample without replacement, then sooner or later we get zero standard errors because Y bar is mu for that population. And that's a descriptive statistic and I'm uncomfortable with Y bar equal mu. I like to think of mu as being in my head and Y bar is on the ground and there's still a mu out there. I could do a thought experiment of if we had a different 50 states, you know, what would happen? They were generated in a certain way, but I can't argue with this logic that you know, if M over N is one, then standard error of Y bar is zero. And then there's clustered standard errors. We can allow for strong dependence within a cluster and independence across clusters or heteroschastic and out of correlation consistent standard errors, maybe less standard errors. Where we basically allow for weak dependence across all observations. And the list goes on and on. I stopped there. As I say, countless variations, you can either combine these approaches, you can have weak dependence across clusters and strong dependence within clusters, et cetera. Or there's a lot of other models for data. We might have a multiway clustering and panel or network data, for example, so we could keep keep going. But one point to note, and I think I'm going to use an example that's in Bruce's textbook, which I will add is out in print and remarkably affordable, though not as affordable as the PDFs that preceded them. So but it it's a go to reference and it has a example of regression case where you know, you think you might have a sample size N of 1,000 and really you have a sample size of 50. That's binary regressor case. 950 observations have X equals zero and 50 have X equal one. And if you allow for sigma one and sigma two to be different, you really only have 50 observations to estimate sigma squared of one. Because sigma squared zero, the rest of the data is just irrelevant for beta and relevant for sigma. So you you lose a lot if there's a lot of high leverage points in a regression problem. And it's not to leverage so much of X is of X squared. So didn't want to jump there just yet. So the effective sample size for this problem is really the you scale the regular sample size by the ratio of the squared second moment to the fourth moment of the regressors. And that's what gives you N one in this special case. And I Bruce has a much more dramatic examples of this in chapter four of his book. But I find it of interest because I work on standard error problems for standard errors that involve some smoothing or tuning parameter. And those tuning parameters usually depend on the sample size, but you got to be careful about what you mean by the sample size. The sample size for estimating a common sigma squared, that's sigma squared one equals sigma squared zero is a lot bigger than it is for estimating just a heteroschastic sigma squared. So I won't go into I won't go into any of the details there. I'll I'll finish up by giving an opinion and it's not a theorem. You may not like it, but bigger is better. You know, standard errors, you don't. I know it. You would like them to be smaller. But if you have a choice, and I'm not saying just make them as big as they possibly can be, but you know, if you have Bernoulli data, P times one minus P is bounded above by a quarter, use that. Better to be on the safe side and zero, in my view, is kind of small.
Okay, our next speaker is Jeff Oldridge.
Thanks to Eli and Serena for organizing this, I think. I'm, let's see, should I, is this, this needs to go on? Well, okay, if if that's okay with you, it's okay with me. I'm actually convinced most of you are here for one of two reasons. You either thought this would be a five minute session. Or you misread the title and think it's how to compute a standard error. So I'm not going to, of course, spend my 20 minutes or 19 now to to talk too much about how to compute a standard error. But I do think that I think the interesting thing about this question is to think about how one approaches the problem and what are the sources of uncertainty that we want to account for when computing a standard error? Now, not surprisingly, my presentation overlaps most with Jim's, at least of the ones that I've seen were of a similar era. And in fact, you know, I opened my favorite, one of my favorite undergraduate books. I couldn't find my Stock and Watson. I don't think Bruce has a glossary in his book, so I couldn't just kind of do this. By the way, you'll notice the definitions didn't get better in the eighth edition from the third either. But I did add a few more here. So the so so you know, we could have ended the session a long time ago if I had presented first, I suppose, right? So so by the way, I want to point out that it seems like at least the people who have spoken on it are kind of in uniform agreement that a standard error is an estimate of the sampling standard deviation. Not everybody thinks that, by the way. I created a bit of a storm on Twitter by saying I never want to see the phrase estimated standard error. And of course, I think I probably have papers with that phrase in it, but you know, that was then I've matured since then, I think. So so you can see these definitions manage to be both somehow pedantic and vague at the same time. And so I'm going to leave it there. But of course, the the general question, if we're just thinking of the only uncertainty in our estimates coming from sampling, which is, you know, kind of how we teach introductory statistics and so on. Then, other than the fact that I used, actually, they did improve. Did you see that sampling? Oh, no, sorry. It's this. Never mind. I used estimate instead of estimator, but of course, so on the next slide, you know, Jim, of course, already showed these formulas as well. You know, the standard error, I'm, you know, I want to think of it either as an estimate, you know, that's the number that's in that state of column, right? Or it's an estimator when we're trying to study both the statistical properties of it. And of course, the statistical properties of things that it feeds into, such as T statistics and confidence intervals. But but that's not, you know, that that's quibbling. So so I think, you know, we don't need a standard error to do a confidence interval. But typically, I think that's what we're thinking of doing, maybe preferred to doing a sharp null hypothesis. But of course, we're thinking of doing some sort of inference with the standard error, usually, I think. You'll notice that I'm not going to, I'm not going to, you know, have any deep thoughts about philosophical discussions. I'm I'm approaching this from a frequentist perspective, and the way I want to approach this in the rest of my time is to basically just say, okay, so something is something is weird here about these slides. Is there a way to get it into full screen mode?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, thank you. You can see my technical skills are still quite lacking. So so I want to, you know, just briefly review the workhorse in in econometrics and certainly lots of books are written and lots of papers are written from this perspective. And so I just want to, you know, talk about that approach and then bring in some more recent approaches. There some are not actually very recent, but there's there's been a renewed interest in combining design based approaches along with sampling approaches. So so you know, I think we do teach probability and statistics from the perspective of, you know, we take a random sample from the population. When I teach it, I don't usually talk about other sampling schemes. But we do know there is such a thing as cluster sampling, there's stratified sampling, there are all these issues. Jim mentioned the finite population corrections, which will show up later on. But then we get to econometrics and we, you know, in a first course, we largely abandon that, right? We start, we write down a model like this, right? And so the the calculation of standard errors becomes largely a model based procedure. So hopefully, I trust this comes as no surprise to anybody in this room. That's the the linear model. Zero conditional mean. By the way, I'm not, I didn't really think to bring biased estimation into this discussion like Andrew and Pat did. My view is, you know, we're going to try to do well in estimating the parameter we want. We're going to admit sometimes we don't get that. And so we're we're trying to get some measure of precision of the thing that we actually can estimate. Okay, that's so. measure of precision of the thing that we actually can estimate. Okay, that's so. So I'm not going to bring bias or inconsistency into this. So, so the somewhat different thing about this, I suppose, is the, oh, this does work over there, is the omega here. Because of course, if omega is unrestricted, then computing the sampling variance of the OLS estimator, conditional on the covariates, becomes a challenge because we have to estimate that thing in the middle. We know from, you know, since the 1980s at least, in econometrics, we don't have to be able to estimate omega well. That was the kind of hurdle that, that I think Hal White, at least explained it to me, overcame, that we actually don't have to estimate those, you know, those individual variances. But we certainly need some restrictions on the joint distribution of the covariates and the error terms. And those are, of course, stacked over some observations. It could be cross-section, it could be time series, it could be panel data. Okay, so of course, the model-based approach can be very highly parameterized, like in the Gauss-Markov assumptions, where we make the problem easy by assuming omega has a very simple form. And then, of course, if we add the normality assumption, we're in business because not only can we compute a standard error, but we know how to get, use that standard error to get an exact confidence interval for each of the parameters and linear combinations and so on. Okay, so that's just to kind of remind you that, that this is typically what we would call the model-based approach. Okay? Now, when we move beyond the basic setup, I would call things like random effect structures, in some areas, they like to call extensions of this hierarchical models or mixed models. They're less restrictive, but they're still very model-based. If you take the structure seriously, they impose some restrictions on omega, which reduces the dimension of the problem for actually estimating the variance, covariance matrix. My view, I guess I probably shouldn't even have put that thing in there about Bayesian's, ignore just the Bayesian approach. So, but of course, you know, in the last, what are we, 40 years now, we've become very interested. And I think the reason econometricians have focused on this is because empirical people really want to be able to focus on those first-order problems that delivers consistent estimates of a causal effect or something like that. And so the idea is, we want inference that's robust to violations of, I'm calling them secondary assumptions, some people may not agree with that, but these are the things that don't affect the center of the distribution of the estimator. So we, you know, we still get consistency. And so, so the, I don't know, saying a non-parametric model-based approach seems a little weird now that I'm looking at it. But the idea is, of course, we have a parametric model, but then we'd like to be non-parametric about how we do inference. Okay. And so, but you know, even here, so you know, then inevitably, we turn to asymptotic. So hopefully, that formula is right for the asymptotic variance, usual square root of N scaling, as Jim showed as well. And so, of course, what we have to do is estimate, you know, the outside of the sandwich is never interesting. It is what it is, right? It's the inside of the sandwich that we have to consistently estimate. And so, we want to do this without making strong assumptions. And so we know now that if we actually do mix in, maybe we'll mix in a sampling assumption and say we have independent draws across observations. Or, you know, we can, in some cases, get away with zero correlation. That leads to the Iker Huber-White standard errors, and then H1, H2, H3, H16, whatever, you know, those things are. Or this could, of course, be a time series problem. We have an ordering of the data. Or it could be a spatial correlation problem, where there also is an ordering of the data in, say, two dimensions. You make some assumptions about weak dependence, put on some weights, and you get a roughly non-parametric estimator of the asymptotic variance, which we then turn into, which we then turn into standard errors by taking a square root. So a lot of recent interest, of course, is on block diagonal structures. I'll call those cluster structures just for shorthand. And here, you know, so in those previous approaches, you know, you have to kind of figure out, like in a time series case, you're willing to order the data from first to last in chronological order and impose some restrictions. So here, I think, is where the model-based approach becomes less appealing. Okay? And as somebody who's essentially worked previously on the model-based approach for these kinds of problems, or at least combined with the sampling approach, you know, I don't say that lightly, but the problem with this is, you can easily fake yourself out, I think. And different researchers are going to come up with different choices for how to come up with groups of similar observations. Okay? And so I see researcher is spelled in a funny way there, but so I don't, it's not very hard to go out and, and find in the literature empirical papers that use pure cross-sections, let's say. And one is clustering by geography. Let's say at the county level, one is clustering by the state level. Some are clustering by occupation, some are clustering by religion. Actually, I think I saw one by religious category not long ago. So the, the problem is that the model-based approach leaves too much to the discretion of the researcher. And here's the extra problem. In standard cases where you have lots of heterogeneity, which we believe in, right? If you then try to test your way out of this by saying, well, I can test, is there cluster correlation within occupation? Is there? That test does not answer the question, should I cluster my standard errors? Because what those tests pick up is neglected heterogeneity, not whether you need to cluster your standard errors. Okay? So the choices can matter a lot. And unlike Jim, I'm not, I'm not going to choose the largest standard error. I actually want the standard error that measures the precision accurately, as close as possible. Okay? I agree that we should tend to be conservative in this, in what we do, but I don't think we want to give away the farm either. Okay? So, so this is an example, similar examples have shown up in various talks by Alberto and Susan and Hedo and me. And, you know, the idea here is just to make sure that we understand what the issue is. So let's take a random sample of people, randomly assign a job training program, so we know the difference in means estimator is going to uncover a causal effect, the average treatment effect. And we obtain a random sample from the population, but then we also observe various geographic location indicators. So going from, from least aggregated to most, census tract, county, and state of residence. And so we get, of course, our beta hat as the coefficient on the treatment dummy di from this regression. And of course, if we didn't have tracked county or state of residence, we know how we would compute the standard error here. We would use the Iker Huber-White standard error, right? And then, but maybe, you know, I think in this example, before I blamed it on the research assistant, says, hey, we should cluster at the state level because, you know, everyone knows there's correlation within state, you know, in things like labor market earnings. The other RA says, let's cluster at the county level because the standard errors are now too big and so on. Okay? So that, of course, we know what the right thing to do here, and that is to not cluster at all. And yet, it's going to make a big difference. Okay? So this, of course, is one of the conclusions in the recent Abadi et al. paper that just came out in the QJE. So, you know, the point is that a model-based approach, you might write down a model and say, and then people are talking about different groupings based on similarity of units. And that similarity can be based on heterogeneity. And the point is, the clustering can matter a lot, and it's wrong. Okay? So I didn't leave a lot of time here, but, and this is what I was talking about before. You know, you can easily do a simulation. If you don't believe this, just generate data from a large population, take a random sample from it, randomly assigned a binary variable, put in heterogeneity in the treatment effects, and then cluster, and then test. And you'll see that the cluster standard errors are, can be way too big on average. And if you do the test for cluster correlation in the residuals, you will find it. And so what will you conclude? You should cluster. Okay? And you're going to do exactly the wrong thing. Okay? Okay, so the, so the, you know, there are other things that one can do, but let me move forward. There, you know, testing, clearly testing on the basis of the difference in the standard errors is also not going to work because the clustered standard errors are systematically too large. Okay? So, so as I was talking about before, you know, usually, we start with this kind of random sampling paradigm. And I, since I already mentioned the sampling schemes, let me not get bogged down on this. A finite population correction occasionally makes an appearance. My intro stats course was too long ago to remember whether that was the case there. But for the most part, we, you know, we think of a superpopulation, we think of sampling a small number of units from a large population, or, you know, with replacement. And then we tell the students, it doesn't make any difference, you know, don't worry about this. So I would actually argue now, if I were to go back and teach probability and stats, that I would actually teach a bit of this, you know, this finite population sampling theory that underlies some of the recent work. So as John pointed out in his talk yesterday, this, the name in paper is now, you know, 100 years old. This is the design-based approach. And so the idea is to, is to think about, you know, focusing more on the, you know, what the likely sources of uncertainty are in estimates. And we can, or estimators, and we can combine both sampling issues along with design-based issues. And focusing on the design-based approach allows us to cover the case that Jim also mentioned earlier, where we actually observe the entire population. Andrew mentioned this case as well. And so when we're interested in doing a causal analysis, it makes sense to think of there being potential outcomes, and then the treatment assignment is the thing that is randomized. Okay? So that's where the randomness is, if you see the entire population, but of course, you might only see a subset of the, of the population anyway. So we would hope that the sampling scheme is actually known. Okay? It's not always known, I think. You're given a data set. And, but in many cases, of course, we are seeing the entire population these days, like all 435 congressional districts, districts, or every school in a state. For example, you can get test score data and all this sort of thing, right? So in experiments, we certainly hope the nature of the assignment is known. So is it random assignment at the unit level, the example I talked about? Is it clustered assignment where you know exactly what the clusters are, like the schools, and every unit within the school is subjected to the same treatment status, in the simple case, 0, 1? Okay? Or are there intermediate cases, which is one of the innovations, I think, in the recent QJE paper? Okay, so in non-exper, unfortunately, we often deal with non-experimental data. I think it still makes sense to think of this in a potential outcomes framework. And sometimes in non-experimental settings, we certainly sample data as well. It is a little less clear, in this case, I think, what the clusters are going to be. Because here, you have something like education. It hasn't been randomly assigned. Let's say we don't have an instrument for it. You're going to see cluster correlation presumably within census tract, and a different cluster correlation within county, and a different cluster correlation within state. And, you know, the question then is, how are you going, you know, what is the level of variation in the assignment of a variable like education that you can consider? So that's going to be, I think, one of my suggestions for future research is, you know, how can we sort this out when we don't have a true experiment? So we don't know what the assignment was of the control and treated. Okay? So the, so, but given a level of clustering, we know if there, as long as there is variation, as there certainly would be in education levels within a cluster, we have some ideas on how to make those standard errors less conservative by, by essentially estimating or trying to estimate part of the term that is causing them to be conservative. Okay? So I, oh, I'm a little out of time. So actually, some of you saw more or less these slides yesterday. Sorry about that. I kind of reused an example. But in the slides, and I'm happy to make these available if you want to go through the details. So this is from, there's no clustering in this paper. This is the case of independent assignment and random sampling. And, and we look at a general regression framework. And of course, in general, we don't know whether we're estimating anything interesting. We're effectively estimating the coefficients from linear projection. Okay? So I'm going to skip over this. This is just defining, using more difficult notation to show you what OLS is on a random sample. But the point is, I'll just go back and say, so the idea about saying, I and we prefer a design-based slash sampling-based approach to the modeling-based approach is, you can actually state exactly what it is you need to know in order to calculate a standard error. And in some cases, you'll never be able to get a consistent estimate of the actual sampling standard deviation. But you at least know what the task is, and then you try to get as close to it as you can. So the key, that's the key line there, basically, is this, this final term here, which is the asymptotic variance, where rho is the sampling fraction from the population. And so this is the, the rho is the finite population correction that Jim mentioned, okay, which is essentially the sample size over the population size. And then this term delta e, this is the term that like, you'll never see in any, like my MIT press book, because I assume random sampling, and therefore, the expectation of all of these terms here is equal to 0. And so you don't get this extra term, right, that is causing the usual Iker Huber-White estimator to be conservative. And so you can try to estimate this final term by using things that are correlated with these expectations, for example. Okay? So I'm almost done here. The, let's see, it's not working. So, and then there are, you know, some further assumptions under which the Iker Huber-White standard error is actually correct. So my point in rushing through this example is that we can actually put, you know, combine cases that I think a lot of people embrace, from a pure sampling perspective, if you want, the design-based approach, see the whole population. These, this approach to asymptotic variances is, you know, includes all those cases. And then, of course, where we want to go with this, Ruwan and Zhu has a paper where she's extended this to M estimation. And then, so you can do probit and logit and Poisson regression. And again, the results on conservative standard errors go through there as well, and how to adjust them. And then finally, I will just, and then there's the work on clustering that I mentioned. And so the over, this was, speaking of coherent, I should have been a bit more coherent. But let me summarize by saying, I think we're looking for frameworks, we should be looking for frameworks in the future, that allow us to kind of minimize the ambiguity in, you know, what different researchers can do without kind of any checks and balances. And so I think we've made progress on that in the past, you know, five to 10 years, in incorporating design-based and, and sampling-based inference, and then extending it to situations where you have assignment and the clustering. Of course, that becomes another thing that generally you need to think about in order to decide when and how to cluster your standard errors. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. The next speaker is Ben Yu. I guess, share the slides, I suppose? Oh, good.
Can you see my slide?
Yes.
Should I start? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you for the organizers to invite me into this econ conference. Actually, it's my first ever econ conference, so it's my great pleasure to be here. So I expanded the title of the session from what's a standard error. For me, it's really asking what's uncertainty. Because if you don't understand what's uncertainty, I don't think I have to worry about standard error. So I'm kind of framing my talk in the context of data science, where you have three big pillars, computer science, math stats, and domain knowledge. And really, we really want to make decisions in context of solving domain problems. And as the previous talk already talked about, uncertainty quantification has been centered to statistics and also to econometrics and other fields that use statistics. And it's really a cornerstone for building trust, right? You give me an estimator without some uncertainty quantification. I don't know how to interpret, give me five, do I trust five? Or the uncertainty is 100, I might just all think the 5, 0, right? So it's really like, like meter to measure how much we can trust the estimators. And statistics formally address only one kind of uncertainty arising from sample variability and their assumed general And statistics formally address only one kind of uncertainty arising from sample to sample variability and their assumed generative stochastic model. In random I tries, of course, we have more control, we actually generate this locality. But in a lot of other problems, we go for a superpopulation. And not always the models are checked or checked well enough. So there were a lot of discussions earlier talks about mis specification. It's because we don't have a perfect model, sometimes don't even have a good model. But if we look at the data science lifecycle in the wild, there actually there are many other sources of uncertainty. So we should not just go for certainty, we should call trust versus uncertainty quantification. Otherwise, we can be sleep. If then certain is 100, you tell me is point five for my five estimate. Then I'm going to overcome it and using that file to do something. So if you take a look at data science lifecycle, right? It's not just about modeling, right? So if you have problem formulation, for example, you want to predict the risk of bringing traumatic injury, which I'll mention. And there's importance that which is data cleaning. And data exploration, and then you go to model. And also even for standard deviation, we saw that there are many different ways calculate standard deviation too. And you have post analysis and all of that. So in addition to uncertainty from the traditional way of thinking data collection process. We actually have many, many human judgment calls also introduce huge amount of uncertainty. So I like to say that, you know, house of uncertainty, the two pink elephants. Why is data cleaning? Why is team effect? Why do I say this? People who work with real data, you never have clean data set from the raw data, right? So I did this project with my students at Berkeley last before 2021. And we have three teams independently working on this traumatic brain injury data to predict the risk. And we even I even got each team, you say as a medical doctor, they're giving the same raw data with the same data cleaning guidelines. Here the students, I shall thank my T A Omar. And then we took the students' way of clean data, we create eight versions of taking clean data. And then we calculate the sensitivity or we've tried to go for 95%. We use the same method, roof it. And you can see that we have a change from the different versions, eight version about biggest difference of 10%. If you do bootstrap, take one version, do bootstrap, you also see about 10%. So this is really saying that for this problem, the data cleaning uncertainty is the same magnitude as sample to sample variability. Right, this is we control the method. Then you have this paper coming out recently by a 73 teams of social scientists try to use the same data. They didn't worry about data cleaning, they have the same clean data to test the same prominent social science hypothesis. Whether immigration will reduce public support for government of social policies. And the results are all over the place, from the very positive to the very negative. And these people also have been screened for qualification to do this together. And also, they already pre registered their approach, but they chose different modeling approaches. So this is controlling for no data cleaning. Uncertainty, but there's this team effect, team uncertainty. So in response to this, and there accounted uncertainty. So myself, my group and collaborator have developed PCS framework for vertical data science for vertical means truthful. To require through prediction, model checking and also account for important source of uncertainty, which are not considered in today's practice of statistics. So the framework appearing in a paper two years ago with my former student, Khan Kumbir. And it's really tried to marry machine learning with statistic expand both. So we take predictability from machine learning statistics use as model checking. And computability, of course, was there. And also hugely expanded the sample to similar variability and call that stability. And stability is also used from control theory, numerical analysis and many other fields. The attempt to synthesize, unify, streamline and expands on the best practices. So a lot of ideas already alluded to in earlier talks, robustness is just try to unify it. So the the contribution PCS to the machine learning or statistical data science, really the emphasis of the stability principle. Actually, with the paper I wrote 10 years ago in the midst of many other papers worried about reproducibility. And I advocate stability as a unifying principle. Considering both reason perturbation to data and also to the dot model use as a prerequisite for interpretation. And also requirement for reproducibility. So potentially it's really robust if I all step in the data sign life cycle, right? Really unify expands lots of lots of work on perturbation analysis. And I believe it's a minimum requirement for inter智力 reproducibility. And also for scientific hypothesis generation or intervention design. You have observational data, you want to clinical trial, observational data. You do predictive analysis and you should also do tons of a stability analysis, which we have used pretty successful cardiology collaboration to find genetic drivers of heart disease. So you need to add a lot of stability, which is also in variance principle in cause of infernal literature, actually started in econometrics in the 40s. And if you really want to be highbrow, I can make this code from Plato really saying that. If you want to have knowledge, things need to be tied down, which I interpret as stability. Not just opinions could change from day to day. So it's now a common sense principle. Stability is also key to mathematical foundations of statistics. Century them theorem, if you look at it. Interverse swapping trick, right? You have I D observation means zero and variance one, and you properly normalize it. And you swap each of them by a random variable independent with the same me and same variance with maybe certain moment. And then you assume you tell expansion that the limit distribution doesn't change. And then you can also show that. The limit distribution was satisfied O D E only Gaussian distribution satisfy. Oh, you just swap with Gaussian distribution. So this is really saying that central dimension stability result concentration in the quality have stability conditions, random matrix also have stability conditions and so on and so forth. So it's really not just common sense, it's also mathematics, the foundation, our field. But there are many, many perturbations, right? You we basically usually tackle the uncertainty in the data collection, right? We can do bootstrap, sub sampling, can add small noise to data, bootstrap residues and bootstrap time series. But there are a lot more, right? In genomics, you have different data you could choose, right? Which data you use to to answer the question about which genes drive this disease called H C M. And data cleaning processing visualization. I can also use in my client like remote sensing work, we also use P D generated data, right? That's also form data which very popular A I now data documentation, you rotate the cat, it's still a cat, you change the background. So all of these are allowed data perturbations with documentation. And privacy, differential privacy, it's a form of stability. So um. If you look at a team effect, right? It's we should try different methods, even with one team as a proxy for team effect. Would be better to have multiple team to do it, but in absence of that, we have software, we should try multiple method instead of just one method, right? Robustness is really try to look at. Two different models or multiple models, you try to get a sense about the center of distribution and semi premature models, regionless soup. Non comics optimization, all of that, right? Sensitivity enhancement, modeling and causal inference is all doing, I will call model perturbations. So people ask, how do we choose PC like perturbation? You eventually end up, you know, never finish your job, right? So so for each of this data sign lifecycle, you have multiple choices. At least I would think should at least take two choices, right? Just to see how big the difference is. Oh, what Andrew has written with his call also local. You do the fucking, you maybe take you have a resource to do four or 10. And you can just random choose each step, toss a coin. Or you have some priors and you can use the prior in there too. And you use documentation to record everything you have done. There's no magic here, just have to be transparent, honest. So the models are mental constructs in our mind. It had nothing to do with reality, even the model can touch the data, you can have completely destroyed reality. So we have to build a bridge with quantitative and qualitative narratives in the P C I documentation and put it on GitHub. Record your judgment calls, so you'll remember how you made the calls and other people can reproduce it. And we have a template, if you care, at my website of on PCS documentation. Otherwise, we're not, you know, very solid ground. So coming back to what standard deviation was uncertainty, right? This I'm giving you a making a case that there are other sources uncertainty, but how to quantify it? So I want to add to the typical data collection process and certainty assessment. Or postulated, you know, uncertainty from a superpopulation, add data cleaning and team effect through algorithm perturbations. So I two more uncertainties. I'm I'm doing this time.
And nine minutes.
I have how many minutes?
Eight minutes, nine minutes.
Nine, wow, I'm really fast. Okay, so I can slow down. So um, the. PCS recommendations on data cleaning actually against based on Andrew's work. Just keep multiple copies of clean process data, they call the multiverse analysis. And document as much as one can do. Or to vet the human decisions. So you should at least to keep two cleaned copies of the data sets and then run everything. If you don't want to formally take into account the uncertainty is layers, since you have only two copies. You should at least run your pipeline with this two clean copies and see how much things will change. If doesn't change, doesn't mean it's bulletproof, but at least you have some evidence that. It's better than doing only one. If you really have the energy, do 10 copies and then run 10. And this way you'll be able to. Really assess the impact of data cleaning, which you cannot do any mathematics. You can have Rubik's for people to follow, but people will make different. Decisions, also imputation, right? People can have different ways to impute, so I put it under data processing. And personally, I'm really worried about using model to impute data because you're kind of mixing up the modeling already right there. So I like simple imputation methods unless you really understand the missingness. Or how data got corrupted, you really understand that process so that your model stochastic model really captures that. Otherwise, I would think that we should go for a very simple imputation methods. And it's good to try multiple imputation methods too. So to expand, now I hope get you interested in seeing how do we put things back together, right? We have this and accounted for uncertainty. And my view of statistical inference is not really conclusive. We're really just one source of information for decision making. And while I was a student, I definitely be like like to believe that we can actually use a P value, make an important decision and and sleep with it. I definitely don't think is the case. I've never seen my own work that's ever the case. So I think we really need to bring in expert opinions and look at the processing steps. It it's more like whole list, whole list investigation if you really want to solve the problems for you guys economics, right? I mean, a lot of our welfare depending on economic policies. It's like, can we sleep at night with the decision we recommend, right? Often we set a circle of steps, I often ask my students, if you have a relative. Who will be impacted by the medical decision algorithm, you're going to recommend. Are you only going to care about the modeling stage? Nobody has ever raised the hand that they're only going to care about that modeling stage. You want to know everything, how the data is collected and how it's cleaned and why it's relevant to you. Or your relative for that decision making. To really impact your welfare. So I think economics, it should be the same thing, even even bigger impact because it's not just one individual and and it's much reaching. So we cannot ignore the search uncertainty in the data cleaning and problem formulation, right? You can formulate the problem, not just. From a. Decision, you can say whether this parameters important, yeah, binary classification. By binary rising, continuous variable. Or you can just do more regression and that's also problem formulation choice, which I'm not addressing here. I'm only addressing all the data cleaning, thinking that you're one statistical. Inference formulation, so there's more we could do. So the key is really can we provide transversity data evidence in a transparent manner? So that the domain expert can understand as much possible our conclusion, so they can evaluate the strength of the evidence. And that is really require us to take a holistic view to look at the whole process instead of the traditional sample to sample variable. It's still important, but it's not the only important thing. And so for the PCS inference, we're required to do model checking. You don't want to do parameter estimation, you don't even know whether your model fits the data. That's just you, you're looking at testing something about mis specification. So you want to have some sense, the model is fitting the data and. Then before you look at inference. So you do prediction check, that's already in your paper. And not just prediction error. Prediction predictability also means use domain knowledge and think about the future situation. I Andrew started mentioning that if you look at the election prediction, you have only 150 states, but it's the future. So we should always keep the future in mind. And then try to mimic in the data we have, find the best surrogates to the future situation. But stability where says cross data and model perturbations. And you can aggregate different models past the prediction check through just leave them as some ensembles. Or take the worst perturbation, so it depends on the context. And for computability beyond the C S scalability and memory and communication costs. We care about in PCS data inspired simulations, because when you look at parameter estimation. There's no way to know the coverage unless you have a good simulation model. I mean, in statistical statistics, basically what we do, right? Through calculus or mathematics, we we have that also mathematical simulated model to study coverage. But if you use computation simulations, you can cover actually broader sets of models at this more quickly. Because not only mathematical machinery is out there, so sometimes for models, for example, have been looking at booting type of regression models. It's not really the machinery is there. So we don't assume a probabilistic model. And we really kind of generalize the bootstrap of a thinking aggressively, we want to create a pseudo. Uh, collecting pseudo data sets and use that as the reference distribution to measured uncertainty. So. The essence of bootstrap idea is really to the construction of a collection of pseudo data sets to measure uncertainty against, right? So we I cannot do mathematics with data cleaning, but I can create the different. A clean data sets and unify everything through this pseudo data set. So we consider two more sources uncertainty later, as I mentioned, you can also consider different model formulation. Which I'm not right now. So this is ongoing research, a paper we're working on. We can consider different data versions in the first, you have sausage parameter you want to estimate. And then you have some data and then you can split the data through the different data cleaning versions, bootstrap altogether in this class of data. And for each of the cloud data, you also can apply different algorithms. And so you collect the uncertainty is the bottom and all the stars. And for tests, you can use test set to assess the coverage of your prediction intervals. But for parameter estimation, we have to use simulated models, which are called data inspired. Means you should take into account what the data tells about the structure from the science and also simulate from multiple models. It's like simulation study, I mean specify models or multiple, not miss it. If you use the term I miss surprise, sometimes there's a truth. Actually, I don't believe it's just I have multiple good models and you want your your method work of. Under this multiple good models. And actually, scientists already ahead of us. This has many of my have seen is nine different models to predict was predicting 1990, 100 year from 1990, the global temperature rise. And the model gave us 1.5 to 5.5. And this can be called, I can only call the PCS perturbation interval because is model perturbation. And they actually use different versions of model mixed with observed data. So to summarize, I hope you find our framework PCS for original data science interesting now to take a look. Go to my website, the important paper, so on the first page. And we really tried to really uncover this hidden universe of uncertainties to code that paper. Uh, from P N S and also account for additional sources. So right now, we're adding to data cleaning and algorithm. A perturbation to capture the team effect, but we could expand later. And we have been very successful using this guiding principle in my group and other people. We have estimation, cross validation, just adding one stability metric to improve less soon selection on top of cross validation. So you get similar prediction performance, but you get smaller models. And we have E to random forest adding stability. And we have E2 random forest, adding stability is random forest. And we succeeded in finding genetic drivers, a heart disease using into random for and collaborating with scientists. And we have another one adding stability for non negative matrix factorization, very successful finding uh Drosophila cell fates, right? You find the different what what cell going to become. So PCS is also framework for stress testing existing decision clinical rules. So we did a paper with UCSF collaborators. And to show that it's a form of internal validation, it doesn't replace external validation. But if you can now pass to say internal validation, then you probably don't want to bother to waste your money to do external validation. For the paper, we also have external data to validate that. Uh we have been using PCS predictability and stability and computation to generate testable hypotheses for experiments and also for for last studies, of course, very much embedded in domain uh knowledge. This is very quick run and we finish your book with my former student postdoc now at Utah Medical School, Rebecca Butter. We're right now doing the last read for MIT Press and hope the book will appear in a year because they take nine months to print it. And we have a free online copies using the PCS framework. It's actually through teaching and research, I've been teaching this to fifty eight for the last twelve thirteen years, so it's really grow after that and also research projects. And many people have actually extended our PCS framework to spatial data scientists by some ecologists from Arizona. Tianzhang from network analysis, I should actually credit Tianzhang for the name where vertical data science. She came out with this, I used to call that three principles. And Susan Murphy's group have expanded on preset for uh reinforcement learning and design. And we have software to help you do this lot of perturbations because it's hard to keep track of with you down Berkeley Rice Labs uh ML flow and Ray. So that we hide all the parallelization to make the perturbation easy for you. It's a kind of a vertical flow. It's a Python package. We also made a packaging R called Sim Chef to make simulation easy, so you can do multiple simulations and check uh whether your method works. So I hope I have removed the two pink elephants in the room and we can have a clean um uncertainty house to live in. Actually, they must small pink elephants I haven't removed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So before we turn to questions from the floor, uh I will ask the panelists if they have questions or discussions among themselves first. What's the answer to the question?
Well, I have a list of about eighteen different ways to compute standard.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. There is like a stability analysis, I always curious about, we have the same like uh hypothesis, but then we're teaching the same class, multiple tests. And we never talk about how do we choose which test to use. And that always was a bit strange to me and um so right there, there's a stability consideration, how do we give uh practical advice to people to even with the same hypothesis? Forget about forming the same domain problem into different hypotheses. So I think we should probably try different ones and see whether we reach the same conclusion. And if we don't, I would think that we have to write a document why say why we just don't have conclusion or some should be trusted more and then we should have a reason for it.
Any any other before we turn to the floor? Okay, questions? Uh first.
Hi, thanks for organizing the session. So my question is, um, how do we go about I gave you different measures of uncertainty? So we might have standard errors or we might have the underlying distribution uh in order to create confidence intervals or you might have different data. Uh so is from different uh papers, we're trying to make a decision, how do we go about plugging in our noise of uh standard uh errors for one estimator, trying a different estimator, trying to come up with different models, sketch of data to aggregate and get a overall sense of all the certainty around um there is.
Who, any?
So um I mean, I I think I so so to get back to you this question, I I still think um at an operational level, saying that the standard error is, you know, an estimate or maybe we should say a consistent estimator that will use standardized it properly of the, you know, asymptotic standard deviation, if you want to be technical is a, I think, a good working definition. But you know, the hard part is you have to first figure out, you know, what that formula is in the asymptotic appearances. And this is where I think the approach is diverged. So you can, you know, like the basic statistics, take up your sampling approach and regression analysis, you can make a model based approach. But if approaches that can kind of lead to very different researchers doing very different calculations, I think we want to try to head to a point where that's less likely. And so I think you do have to take a stand on what you're doing. Are you taking a model based approach where you're going to say here are my clusters and I think all units outside this cluster, they're they have well, not correlated errors, right? That's usually and all units in have correlated errors and that's how I'm going to, what I'm going to use in my standard errors. But um hopefully that example I went through gave, you know, a simple example where that can badly go astray if you are kind of doing it without thinking about what the true uncertainty is in the problem you have. Is it design uncertainty? Is it sampling uncertainty? Is it both of those? And you know, when you focus on a potential outcome framework and and causal effects, and I know that's not everything that we do, we forecasting and so on, but let's just take that case. I think we're we're heading to a point, you know, lots of people are thinking about these things where um I think we're going to keep getting better answers to that. Like here, here are the the things that we have to know in order to, you know, get a formula that makes sense. And then, of course, the separate issue is how we're going to estimate that formula and we'll make progress on that as well, I think. Um, actually, I'll use this to promote Ruwan's talk tomorrow, talking about how to incorporate spatial component in a design based setting. Uh, and one of the, it's a lot of things like that. So so you can, you can do this and um and and incorporate things like still this and so on. But I it's not that we want to take the modeling decision out of people's hands, I think. But we do want to, you know, I think in the future, avoid seeing papers in pretty good journals where they they've clustered on occupation, for example. You know, a job training program somewhere really assignment is at, you know, the county level or the state level, uh just because they notice in occupation correlation. Okay, so I think heading in directions that avoid that sort of thing, I think that's a good correction.
To to add to that, I would say that I will ask, what you can do with it? Right, what's the downstream usage of this interval? I think that's always important. I don't think we are at a point that we can just in abstract come out with a solution. Like we're working all the situation, eventually maybe we see some problems, we'll have some understanding. But right now there's so many choices that I don't think we're at that point yet to really just tell people without the context to say, oh, that's what you should do. At least I don't have the confidence. And the other thing is not everything should have a formula, that's what I tried to say. And this computational approach should be embraced as just parallel or as important as the traditional mathematical statistics approach. I love mathematical beautiful elegant math, but sometimes it's the world is messy. So um open to more algorithmic approaches to assess uncertainty. And we have the computing power at disposal is a lot more feasible now than say fifty years ago.
Okay, next.
I can uh echo something that Ben said, and I think that Andrew said uh in his off the cuff remarks, you know, I I wasn't able to see the slides there, the whatever's going on there in the room when when Jeff was presenting. But I think I know the formulas that he's referring to. And I think that you have to take these newer results on um finite population inference, which are updates of much older results by name and with not with a grain of salt, but maybe you have to think carefully about when you want to use um those standard errors and those approaches inference. So if what you're trying to do is just talk about internally valid on this finite population um and uncertainty, then that's the right formula. Um, but in many cases, I believe that the applied community is mixing in, um they are interested in um thinking about would this, you know, replicate in another village or in another um setting? And there it's it's a little bit, I don't, I I I don't fully agree with um some of the strong statements about, you know, this, this would be the wrong standard error, it really depends on what what you're trying to do. If if you took a RCT where you're assigning a vaccine, you're offering a vaccine to individuals IID random with a coin toss. I agree that if there's heterogeneity that the and we're let's pretend we're doing this in many villages and there's heterogeneity, the cluster standard error will be different than the robust standard error, the robust standard error will tell us something about whether there was an effect in those villages that we actually conducted those that experiment. But if we want to also know something about what if we sample more villages from the same population? Should what, how much uncertainty should we expect there? Then we we'd want a different formula. And so I I think that what the applied world hasn't quite come to grips with yet is that for the same estimator, you could have two different standard errors based upon your intended use of that estimator. Um, and that's going to require a lot more sophistication, I think, um among empiricists to think about how to how to grapple with these issues.
Okay, I think we're officially out of time, but we'll take maybe two short, one or two short, because you raised your hand earlier. Actually, you want to go?
Just just one quick question. When it is like imperative to report the standard of statistical crime and how to report? It's the same question that you mentioned, that's true. Why can't we just report the eval? Some of these different things can have a certain or not why it's always comparative. So in every case, when it has to be the function of.
So so a sh- short, short answer to this?
Well, I think we lack a confidence. And so, you know, you can, you know, the vast majority of cases, once you have the standard error, if you're in a world where things are asymptotic and normal and that that complication for confidence, I'm hoping to get away from short testing zero and all that.
Okay, last, last question, short question.
So um, you know, a lot of this, a lot, what I saw is, I feel like, you know, we're trying to find like the right formula for the standard error. But really, what I wonder is, should we be treating this as an opportunity to like learn about our effect? To think about our effect in a higher order closer, to think about the destiny of the cluster and like how we can take advantage of that? So like really kind of bringing it more into like the fact, the mean, you know, like when we're working the mean function, should we be kind of bundling this all together?
So um so you know, it's a lot of this recent work on the design of a sample based approach that's focused on fairly simple settings. But the general point I think is going to carry over. So if you actually, for example, if you had panel data, right? And you wanted to exploit the fact that you know there's serial correlation over time, you're free to do something like a GLS time estimation to exploit that serial correlation. But in the end, you're going to allow that probably to be miss specified, that's one thing we already knew that. But you're still going to have to ask the question. If this policy is assigned at the individual level, you know, independently across individuals, then of course you're not going to have to cluster at a higher level. But if the policy is assigned at, say, the school level and you have a panel data of children, then you're going to have to take the assignment at the school level seriously when you compute your standard errors. And you know, there's a difference between whether, you know, you you cluster a small, you sample a small number of clusters from a big population to address that comment or whether you see the entire population, that certainly has an effect on the formula. But there is one formula actually, um so you know, you can get one formula that covers all cases actually.
Okay, um let's let's end here, hopefully this this uh gives you uh more opportunities in the future to think about that certainty. So I want to mention one thing, there's a cocktail hour upstairs to um celebrate the fiftieth anniversary of the journal. Uh, we actually have the one, the one of the founders of the journals will give us a talk about um the early days and certainly the first twenty years of the journal and so on. So you're welcome to attend. And one last thing I want to say, I want to thank all the speakers for a great session. I think we all agree that there's a lot of thought walking here and serious uh things that they leave us with, and so please uh join me in thanking the speaker.
Thank you.
It's in the Jackson Room upstairs.
Yeah, none of the, I'm other. Huh? Your reception is not on this, the AS and F A list, it's only.